Good morning. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Board Work Session for this Wednesday, December 1st, 2021. 10:02 a.m. My name is Ty Menter, Chair of the Board. To my left, Vice Chair Commissioner Gary Edwards. To my right is Commissioner Carolina McKee. We have County Manager Ramiro Chavez, Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell. Our Auditor, County Auditor Mary Hall is here, and she has some guests, I believe, that I can have her introduce. We have half an hour slated for a briefing regarding Accessible Communities Advisory Committee, and this meeting is livestreamed on our YouTube channel. So should I go straight to the auditor or County Manager?
I think I just give the floor to County Auditor Mary Hall.
Good morning, Mary. It's all you.
Good morning. Thank you Commissioners Robin and Romero for allowing this opportunity to come and talk to you about our desire to convert our Voting Accessibility Advisory Committee, which is required by law that we have. And we'd like to convert that to an Accessible Community Advisory Board, which we refer to as an ACAC because we love acronyms. And, you know, I've gotten a lot of requests from the community as far back as a couple of years ago. And, you know, I've reached out to you Romero, and I know, you know, everybody in the county is pretty pretty tight right now with the workload. And so we just figured that, you know, why not convert our our voting accessibility community to a VAC? And I wanted to bring some people in to have you hear from them of what that transition would look like. I've invited Calitz County Auditor Carolyn Fundingslin. She set up an ACAC in her county, and she's going to share her experience, and then you're free to ask any questions. I also have folks from, I have Megan Mason Todd, who's Chair of the Accessible Communities Subcommittee of the Governor's Committee on Disability Issues and Employment, and Elaine Stefanowitz. Did I get that right? I did. From the Governor's Committee on Disability Issues and Employment. And also Nicole Miller. So they'll be able to talk to you a little bit about from the actual, what is a Accessible Communities Advisory Committee. But I wanted to talk a little bit of how Thurston County would benefit. But I watched the board meeting where you were discussing this, or it was a work session. So I wanted to address some of the specific concerns that were brought up at that meeting. One of them was that establishing an ACAC is really a budget request because, you know, we would be asking for grants, and we would need matching funds, and that's really not true. And also that an ACAC would bind the county, you know, for more money than just to create, complete a project. And also that ADA work would need to be done if the ACAC identified deficiencies, and that would be contrary to the plan that the county already has in place. And that's not true either. An ACAC would not tie the hands of the Board or the County Commissioners in making any decisions. But it would really bring the community together and create a lot of efficiencies. And for example, in preparation for moving our voting center and voter registration to the Montman Campus, I had two meetings to talk about disability access. One was with the City of Tombwater because I wanted them to, there's a bus stop right outside the building, and I wanted them to make that a new parking zone because trucks park there all the time. And that was successful. They agreed to that. And then I also met with intercity transit to talk about creating a covered area, you know, that you see at a lot of bus stops, and that was successful as well. But if we'd had an ACA, both of these organizations would likely have been participating in that. So I could have done that with one meeting. And I really think that it would help the community share resources, partner on projects. And counties have converted their VAC to an ACAC. Calitz County is a great example of that, which is why I asked Auditor Fundingslin to come and share her experience and allow you to answer any questions also. So I will just go ahead and hand it off to Auditor Fundingslin to talk about her experience in Calitz County.
Thank you, Mary. And thank you for allowing me an opportunity to share my experience converting to an ACAC. Calitz County formed a Disability Advisory Committee in 2006. I hope you all know what those, I'll call it a DAC and an ACAC, these acronyms. I hope that we don't get tripped up on because those are big mouthfuls to say over and over. So this was a challenge. It was a statutory requirement. This was a challenge for us, for sure. We fulfilled our obligation, though, and started meeting twice per year with the sole purpose of improving access to elections for all. After the first few meetings, our committee discussions started to expand far beyond voting. So we started to include community speakers at each meeting on a variety of topics such as transportation issues, mental health and wellness, assisted living, and senior healthcare. And this created a lot of interest in our community, and it naturally grew our membership to over 40 strong. So some of our members right now include city employees and council members, tribe members, transit officials, Disability Rights Washington, Housing Opportunities of Southwest Washington, Disability Resources, Compass Career Solutions, Life Works, our local community college and school districts, and that's just to name a few. Because of this natural expansion beyond elections and voting, converting our committee to an ACAC was really the logical next step for us. So on September 27th, 2016, roughly 30 of our committee members attended the Calitz County Public Meeting to speak to our Board of County Commissioners in support of the conversion, and also to witness them signing the letter of assurance that's required from the Governor's Committee. This conversion allowed us to have a much broader view on accessibility issues in our community, and also provides us with access to the funds that are required to address those issues. Calitz County has been fortunate enough to be a grant recipient several times in the last few years, and we look forward to many more opportunities in the future, working with the Governor's Committee on future projects. But I wanted to share some of our grant awards. We received funding for an American Sign Language Interpreter for our ACAC meetings. We've received travel reimbursements for different training events. We hosted a multi-part town hall that involved several elected officials and community members across the county coming together to discuss, prioritize, and plan for addressing accessibility issues in our community. That was a big hit in our community. And our most significant grant to date involved a large remodel of our historic county administration building. It was originally built in 1923. We received $63,000 to upgrade the entrances on our second floor to fully accessible ADA storefronts in the assessors' office, auditors' office, and treasurer's offices. None of these grants required matching funds of any kind. And I wanted to keep this brief for Mary, but in summary, I would say that a DAC is narrowly focused on election-related issues only, and an ACAC has a much broader scope, and it benefits the entire community. In my experience, Calitz County had everything to gain by converting to an ACAC and nothing to lose. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Ms. Ms.?
Yes.
Go ahead.
On the larger model that you mentioned with the $63,000 grant, how much was the total project?
$63,000.
So that's what the total project cost?
Yes. Yeah, Calitz County provided no matching funding in any of our grant opportunities. My commissioners were very vocal about saying, "Don't ask us for a penny," was their exact words. And, you know, they ultimately review and sign our grant contracts, so.
Ms. Ms.?
No, I just want to thank Carolyn for filling us in on what possibilities there are, what's to come. I think this is too new for me to really quiz anybody on yet.
Is there, so when you mentioned, like, I mean, you described a very impressive sounding stakeholder group of, you know, and I'm just wondering, is there a minimum amount of people, like, to convert it from what we have to what we would need to have from the Governor's Office, does it matter? I mean, does it have to be that big? That sounds kind of daunting to administer, or can it be more compact? And how does that, what are the side rails on that membership?
So there's absolutely no requirement on membership, but I can tell you that being in Mary's shoes, when we have that very narrow focus of election-related issues only, you lose membership. They're not interested. There's only so much that you can do and discuss in elections. And so really, it's the natural progression of things to start thinking outside the box and what we can do in our community. And once you start doing that, it's actually a natural progression for membership to come and your membership to grow because they're interested. Everybody shares, everybody participates, so it's actually easy to grow that membership.
Sorry, Menter. May I?
Yeah, I have, thank you for coming this morning. Ready to follow up to Commissioner Menter's question on the larger group. Can you give me some perspective as to what are the deliverables of this large group? You know, they meet how often, and what is the deliverables? What is the outcome? And so is that for them to bring ideas, and if those ideas materializes on a project? Or give me some perspective of that, if you don't mind.
So an ACAC still, we have to meet our minimum mandates, and that is a requirement in law to meet a minimum of once a year and maintain an accessibility plan. So first and foremost, we meet those requirements, and we rely on this diverse group of individuals to provide us feedback on the needs of elections, and then we progress outside of elections. So I would say at minimum, we meet our mandate, and we meet the minimum requirement once per year. We create a plan for accessible elections, and then we look outside of that for other needs that we can meet. And, you know, one of the most important things that we do in our regular meetings is at the very end of the meeting, we have a round robin. Everybody from their organization gets to share their needs or upcoming events, and it's really networking. It's really important for this group.
And I think Megan and Elaine and Nicole could probably speak to what some of the counties have done. There are some pretty fun things. So why don't I just turn it over to folks with the AC and Governor's Office if you'd like to maybe address some of those questions?
Sure. So my name is Megan Mason Todd. I am a volunteer on the GCDE, and I'm the Chair of the AC Subcommittee. So the GCDE has four or five subcommittees, and one of them is related to accessibility in our communities. So our Subcommittee, I just want to talk about what the goals of our Subcommittee are so that everybody understand. When somebody parks in a disabled parking spot illegally, they get a ticket. And $100 of that $500 ticket goes into a fund that we are supposed to be giving to counties that have ACACs. So counties will apply for grants for projects that they have, and we will grant some of the counties money to fulfill those grants. So we're basically in charge of divvying out that money. Currently, in the state of Washington, there are 13 counties with ACACs, and I believe four of them converted from their Voting Accessibility Advisory Councils to ACACs. So that's one of our things that we do on the GCDE Subcommittee. Just a few more examples of some of the projects that have happened in different counties. Some of the projects are not necessarily related to county properties, I guess. Some of them are, and some of them are nonprofits, some of them are city parks, so it doesn't have to be necessarily used on county properties. It's whatever the committee, whatever the citizens of that group decide that they want to focus on. So in Pierce County, we created a horse ramp so that people could run their wheelchairs up on the ramp and get on the horse. We, in Jefferson County, there's a nonprofit called Centrum that has, you know, 50,000 to 60,000 people that go through their buildings every year, and they needed a hearing system so that people that have hard-of-hearing disabilities could hear. So we granted them money. In Kitsap County, we granted beach wheelchairs. So they are being housed somewhere in the county, but they are for people that want to access the beach. In Island County, we paved part of a city park to get, so people could go from a museum down to the water to watch the whales. And in Waikeaham County, we paved part of a county park, just a piece of it, because that's all they wanted at that point. So they had a repaving project, and we paved part of it for them. So those are some examples of some of the projects. The other thing that the AC Subcommittee does is we bring the counties together so that they can share best practices. Loved hearing what you're doing, Carolyn, because some of those things would be really beneficial for the other counties in the state to tap into. I mean, every county is using their ACs differently. Some of them are, you know, they're just all doing amazing things. Up in Skagit County, they're talking about how to get broadband up there because that's an issue that they have in that county. In Jefferson County, they're building a, you know, multi, it's a half a million dollar accessible playground, and that project's just been tons of different groups and stakeholders together. The other thing that we can do is we can provide a little bit of technical assistance based on whoever happens to be on our committee and whatever experiences they have. And then we can assist counties in setting up their own ACACs. The one thing that we don't do is, we don't give advice to counties about what they should be doing. We don't get into the realm of, hey, you're, you know, you haven't, this is not up to compliance, you need to deal with it. We don't, that's not our role. We don't go looking at projects to figure out what else should be done or any of that. So that's, it's just not what we do. And also, I just want to address that most counties do not have a paid position that's running these Advisory Boards. I would say, when you get a really good group, like what you have, Carolyn, I'm guessing you have a committee, a volunteer committee chair, vice chair, secretary, all of that. And really, it's run by the volunteers. So they get in there, they're coming from all walks of life. You can have a committee of five people, you can have a committee of 40. You guys might have one of the biggest ones, I would say. And those volunteers really, they decide what they want to focus on, and they oftentimes are finding funding all over the place. There's lots of different grants out there, and they find it, because we have a limited amount of funding. We have some. But there's other options and other ways of getting funding. So we have some really amazing things happening in our state around accessibility because of these groups of volunteers. And it's exciting to hear that Thurston County has citizens that are coming forward saying, hey, we really want to bring all of these groups, because I know you have groups of people working in nonprofits in the county and the cities that are interested in accessibility. And this is a way to bring everybody together so that there's a common voice and some common goals. Do you have any questions?
I have a question. When you, so when you said you give some advice or some help to formation, and I'm wondering what those steps are. Somebody made reference to a letter of intent or something. I mean, what steps would we have to take if we wanted to convert our VAC to an ACAC?
Elaine, can you answer that?
You're unmuted, Elaine.
Jeez. What the heck? Sorry about that. Yeah, I'm Elaine, and I'm a staff person for the Governor's Committee on Disability Issues and Employment. And I would work with the county to establish the ACAC. And it would be, we call a letter of assurance, that would be signed by the auditor and endorsed by the commissioners, and would have a list of the people that would serve on the committee. And like, as was mentioned before, that we pay for any meeting accommodations for the members to be able to attend the ACAC meetings. So if they need a sign language interpreter or CART captions, that's, we do any type of reasonable accommodation like that. And it is a fairly simple process to write this letter. I would send out a template, and you would just follow along with that.
It sounds pretty simple. Thank you.
Yeah, we actually have that letter already prepped, so.
Great.
Robin?
Just to hear the lesson.
Okay.
Well, the only thing I can come up with right off the top, man, it sounds like a good idea. Let's do something, but the shoots fall apart for getting people down there so they can observe that.
Something that would follow within that. So I've got an idea already. I don't know how you.
There you go.
Okay, Mary, what else did you want us to address?
I think this is it. You know, I was going to bring AIS to you actually a couple of months ago until I heard the the meeting. I just wanted to have, ensure that you had an opportunity to hear from, you know, people who have an ACAC and converted their VAC or DAC, and also, you know, the Governor's Office. So, you know, we're required by state law to have a Voting Accessible Advisory Committee, and I think it would not only benefit our committee, but I think it would just be a great project for the community. And I've talked to, you know, people from all the three major cities, and they're certainly interested in participating as well as intercity transit. And there are a lot of just miscellaneous groups out there, nonprofits, Council of the Blind, for example, that I think we could bring together. And like I said, we have to do this anyway because of state law, but I think it would be a lot more robust to be able to open it up to the entire community. I think that the partnerships would be priceless. And I also think that, you know, in an indirect way, it would allow us to better understand what we need to provide to the disability community for voting also. So I just see it as a win-win situation. So we'll be sending an AIS your way, and, you know, I hope that you'll you'll agree to do this, and we will be very good stewards. And, you know, I'm very, I'm going into this eyes wide open. I know exactly what is involved, and we're up to the task because it's something we're doing anyway.
Are these committees, so you mentioned the money from the tickets, and then it goes to counties. Is this specifically by statute, a county level, like, if our City of Olympia, can they form a committee and access this money as well, or is it only a county-level thing?
They would actually be a member of the committee, and anybody on the committee can ask, can apply for grants. It's not a Thurston County government committee. It's a community committee. Does that make sense?
Just, but in terms of this letter of assurance and formation, does it have to come from the County Commissioners to be formed? It can't come from a city council or whatever? That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, and Elaine, you can talk about it. There's a VAC involved with the money that comes from the disabled parking spots, and it basically, in the VAC says that counties can apply for the funding, can apply for the grants. And so the county has to have an ACAC, but the people on the ACAC are going to come from all different walks of your county. Citizens, city, I mean, you might have state people that live in the county.
I understand. I was just, to me, it's an additional argument that we should do it if this has been specifically placed on our, you know, we're the only ones that can do it for the community as a whole. So that sounds like, that's true.
Yeah.
No, I just, I kind of didn't get the, your question was like, can the cities form their own ACAC was? And can they? Can they? Or?
I mean, they couldn't, they couldn't get funding if it was supported by the city.
The contracts that we do have to be done with the county person, so whether that would be Auditor Hall or, but in the actual contract, yeah, she would do the signing, and so it has to be agency to agency to be able to do our contract with the Employment Security Department, which is, we fall under the umbrella of employment security.
So yeah, you, the county is the only one that can make this happen. Because there's been citizens in your county that want to start it, and we've been saying, well, you really, your county has to be the supporters of it.
I have one question. The money you're talking about from the parking violations, is there any other source of revenue besides that that you oversee?
No. And it's not a ton of money. I'm just going to warn you.
Well, that's what I wondered about.
Yeah, it's not, so it's not the only reason you'd want to form an ACAC is that money, because it's under $100,000. A lot of counties use it for their, you know, getting accommodations in their meeting. Like, if you have somebody on your committee who's deaf, you're going to need interpreting services, so we will pay for that. But what we do is we link up the counties with other funding sources that we don't oversee. So an example would be the Washington Conservation and Recreation Department, which is a state agency, and they have millions of dollars, millions of dollars that can be given to anyone, counties, cities, whatever, in relation to like park enhancement, you know, and all of their stuff is required that you have to follow ADA law. So they have way more money than we do. So what we tend to do is, you know, hey, this is a park, you know, go try to get funding from them first because they have way deeper pockets.
We already work with them.
Yeah, I'm sure. But there's other, there's lots of other avenues that counties are using for funding, and that's one of the benefits of this, is we try to get all the counties together, talking about where they're getting money. So.
So thank you for the clarification in my mind, but I do have a question related to, the counties through the ACAC are the only entity who can apply for grants, because the contractual aspect is from government to government, as you stated. But also, any member of this committee, whether it's a nonprofit, and I've heard of some of the projects that you listed are nonprofits, they can go and make an argument for the county to apply for those grants on their behalf. Since, so as a result, the county is responsible for the performance of that contract. Since, so as a result, the county is responsible for the performance of that contract, in this case for a nonprofit.
So what happens is...
Help me bridge that gap and...
Yeah, so let me, I'm just going to talk about the Centrum project in Jefferson County, because I know that one well. So there's multiple people on the ACAC, people from all walks, and they've decided as a group which projects are most important to their county and which gaps they have in their county. And with that Centrum project, for example, they have massive quantities of people going through their county. That particular nonprofit brings tourism into their county. So as a group, that group of, I think there's 10 or 12 of them or something, decided that it would be important for Centrum to have inaccessible spaces. I think the counties also use those spaces for, Jefferson County spaces for different meetings also. So they decided as a group what was important to them. It doesn't mean that, I mean, the oversight of the project, for that project is pretty minimal. I mean, they're buying a system, and they're putting it in place, and that's it.
So I have a question. So would the county be the administrator of all the grants and have to monitor the subrecipients? Or do they apply for the grants on their own? I guess that's...
They apply as a group. I mean, there is a county, the DDA Advisory, the DDA Coordinator up there is involved at some level in helping make sure the grants are moving along, and it's not some grant that's completely, you know, unrelated. And so she, you know, helped decide. They actually put two grants, and one was for a playground, which I believe is a county park that that one's going into, but they, so she will help a little bit, but, and I think the contract that you're writing, Elaine, is she signing it, or is Centrum signing that one? Must be, the county still signs the contract.
Elaine, you're on mute.
Oh my gosh, I do it, my dog barks, I apologize. So, yeah, what was your question, Megan? I'm sorry.
So in Jefferson County, with the nonprofit one that I'm talking about, it still would be signed by the county, correct?
Correct, yes.
And I guess, I mean, what the point is, is that they know that this is going to benefit county, the county, even though it's not a county property. It's going to be massively beneficial to the members of their county. So it's like the county itself is supporting their community members in any way they can. They're not just thinking about county buildings or county parks, because there's other pieces of, there's other things within the county that county members are benefiting from.
Yeah, I appreciate that. So then the county, sorry, sorry, Romero. So the county then would still have to approve the grant, so the board can say yes or no if they wanted to apply for the grant, which is how it works today. Everything has to be approved by the county commissioners.
I don't know if they're going to the county commissioners before they put the proposals in. I don't think they are in Jefferson County, but I can get you connected with that person to find out. I don't believe projects are being approved by county commissioners in other counties before they are sent to us. I could be wrong, though.
Do you have the county's libel for the money?
That might be an internal procedure. That is how Calhoun County operates.
That goes through your board? Okay.
So yeah, you can set it up any way you want.
We're almost out of time, but I thought, K Manager, I don't...
No, I think I got my answer, my question answered. And my question was not solely questioning the value of any particular project and the value of the community members involved in this group. I guess my question was, as I understand, any grants, whether it's a nonprofit or anybody outside of a county, including the county, the county will be responsible for carrying on the contract, and the county will be responsible for the performance of that contract as well, regardless of the amount. So, and that's how I believe it binds the county on that grant, because I can understand you couldn't have many, you know, contracts with many nonprofits, because the county, in this case, is the one who needs to stand and making sure the performance of the grant is carried on. So thank you for the clarification.
I have a question. Is this, how would this work interact with what TRPC does as far as accessible communities? Aren't they working on that already?
They do have a manager. But we can totally, I don't know.
We'd want to hook them up as well.
Yeah, they could be part of the group. Okay, we're out of time. Yeah, sorry, K Manager.
We would like to, you know, throw a wide net, and, you know, I think the fact that the auditor houses a grants manager would, you know, be important for this. So anyway, I hope you'll allow us to take on this project.
Thanks, everybody.
So thank you very much for having us and listening to us today.
Thank you so much.
Thank you to all our guests. Appreciate your information. It was great.
Sure. Have a good day.
To all of you for taking the time to come and talk to them. I really appreciate it. Bye-bye.
Thank you very much.